Thank you for doing all that. Okay, any other comments or questions in regards to that? Okay, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve, can I do the educational increases as one motion? Motion to approve the educational increases for staff as presented in your packet. Thank you, Mark. Second was that Aaron? Second was Aaron. Discussion. Any questions? Just contractual.
Again, just thank you to those folks for taking the time to go through the process and do those things.
Agreed. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve. The contract for Savannah Rizloff as special ed, very professional.
So moved.
Thank you Joel, second. Thank you Aaron. It was Aaron over there, apologize. Discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the concessions contract for the next school year with Kuanis. Thank you Aaron, second. Thank you Nick. Discussion.
There's no change again, that's your correct.
I think it's the same one we've been doing for eternity. Same one Jim?
I've never seen.
Laurie, ever seen a different one? Alright, good enough for me. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the tax request as provided in the packet. Thank you Joel, second. Thank you Nick, discussion. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the policies for the spectator, fan, code of conduct, and activities communication guidelines. Do I need two motions on that or just one? One motion. Thank you, second. Thank you Mark. Discussion.
Any feedback that you've had from staff or coaches as they've seen this?
I think they're appreciative of what it's like. Hopefully they don't have to do like them.
Do you post them down here or do you just have to shoot or do you just find out?
They will go into a policy manual, so the policy manual is updated. Policy manuals to attend to tomorrow. So she's gonna have to be online. Policy manuals, we can send something out to the parents. Just so that they're aware of what the policies are. If that's what you wish.
I think we should at least send it out to as many people as possible.
You know what it hurt the first year to hand copies up on the glass in the armory or the ticket booth for the football field.
I do like that.
I guess it's good not only for our peoples and all, but for the sports teams to, you know, set a standard. But we're trying to be proactive and other communities will see that and believe in that.
Nathan, can we do that, get that out there for sure? Can it be like going on the.
Have those kind of.
Yeah, well, that'd be the RF, the Pringles. And maybe just posting it on a couple of the walls, five seconds, but the high traffic area would be good.
What are the 80s that in the room, you support a lot of evidence?
Yes, we've.
Got visited.
Yeah, we've visited.
So, you know, just about with that, we're gonna just take a couple of minutes. We got Bearcat TV and it's good for people to know that our new law, Fan of Convened Conduct, basically, it's a couple of pages, but some of the highlights are unacceptable behaviors are disruptive or unruly behavior, foul or abusive behavior, or obscene gestures, rudeness to fellow fans or district personnel. Fans who display unacceptable behaviors will be subject to sanctions, including refusal of admittance, removal, and arrest. The first offense, the spectator will schedule to meet with the appropriate athletic director with resulting action that can include removal from the next two athletic contests of the same sport or the district related activities for two weeks, whichever is greater. A letter will be sent to the appropriate athletic director and superintendent to the violating spectator, notifying him or her of their ejection or prohibition from admission dates. Second offense, the spectator will be removed from all athletic contests and other school events and activities for six consecutive months of school calendar and more scheduled activities. A letter will be sent to the athletic director and superintendent to the violating spectator, notifying him or her of the admission prohibition with a begin date and end date. Third offense, the spectator will be removed from all district athletic contests and other school events and activities for a two-year period. They will receive the same type of notification. Non-athletic events, any audience member causing unnecessary disruption during the event will be asked to leave the venue immediately. The incident will be documented and filed. Future incidents will result in admission prohibition as determined by the administration. In addition, we will also have a new code of conduct involving communication guidelines between parents and coaches. And I think this is important for people to know and I hope that folks refer to our guidelines and our policies. A couple of things to take particular note of. Parents can expect the following from their coaches. One, the philosophy of the coach. Two, the expectations of the athlete and team. Three, location of all practices and games. Four, a copy of the team rules. Communication coaches expect from the parents are, one, concerns related to a son or daughter's mental, physical, or emotional well-being. Two, specific questions about a coach's expectations of parents. Three, notification of any injuries or illness. Four, notification of any student absences from practices or games. Appropriate parental concerns to discuss with coaches include mental or physical treatment of a son or daughter. Number two, ways in which the parent can help their son and daughter improve. Number three, concern about their son or daughter's behavior. Inappropriate parental concerns to discuss with coaches will be, number one, playing time. Number two, team strategy. Number three, play calling. Number four, team selection. Number five, another athlete. If a conversation with the coach turns to any of those five topics, Webster's coaches have been instructed to immediately end the discussion. Further, any inappropriate language, rude, disrespectful, demeaning, or threatening behavior will signal an immediate end to the discussion. We are asking that the coaches, excuse me, that the parents follow the 24-hour rule. We've been pretty continuous with that for the past few years. I won't go into the explanation of that. These are just some of the highlights of what we are putting in our new policy. Consequences for violating the activities communication guidelines with coaches include the first offense, an admission prohibition to the next two scheduled events. A second offense, a six-month of consecutive months of school calendar or indoor scheduled activities. And the third offense, again, would be a prohibition for two years. We wanna get proactive about this and we would ask that members of the community help us in policing that. It's our kids, we understand that. And we understand that when you're talking about your children, sometime emotions run high. But hopefully, your friend, your neighbor, your spouse, or somebody can help check you before you run afoul of these issues. If you have questions or concerns about it, have a conversation with our administration or the appropriate conversation with the school board member. We appreciate you guys for our support and for your support. Any other comments about that?
I just think it's important to know that this is a reactive policy. We've had troubles, but we're trying to fix. So, this policy is gonna hit somebody unfortunately at some point in time and they're not gonna be happy, but we've been pushed into having to write this.
Agreed. Alright, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to have discussion in regards to the resolution as to school bonds. Thank you Joel, second. Thank you Nick. Alright, I know that we've got some folks here, Nathan, with your cast group, and before we start discussing it from the board's perspective, I would open up the floor to you and then if you have anybody else that wishes to speak from within your group.
Yeah, we've just, we've been in contact here this past month since the last board meeting and we're still pretty firm with that $11 million amount. I've been in touch with Tom Squiers down there, the architect. And just in conversation with him, if we go less than the 11, we're really cutting this down to where it's, we're losing some functionality, we're losing, we're stripping it of its usefulness, I think. We kinda run that risk. He did say, you know, the 11 million, you know, just to be honest about it, is kind of the bare minimum for the needs. Now, if there's extra wants or the updating or whatever, that's really gonna be the pledges, fundraising, naming rights, whatever we can do, grant money, you know, that sort of thing. So I really, I think we need to kinda stay firm with that. And then just, I don't know, you know, for people that weren't watching last month, the 11 million puts the tax burden at about 98 cents per thousand, so we stay under that $1 threshold, I think that was important to a lot of people. I think we still get a good usable space that's big enough for our needs, while still keeping in mind that we don't want this thing to balloon to a big burden on the taxpayers. Trying to be responsible that way too. I don't know, am I missing anything, guys? The square footage hasn't changed since last month. We haven't done anything with design since last month, except for just in conversation, little things, tweaking and whatever, but nothing major on that front, I guess. No new concepts. I spoke to Kuanis today, this morning, and I brought the concepts that we had. And I had some good feedback. There's some concerns, but some of them were more on the why's and fine arts attached to this and things like that. That's a fair question, but for right now, this committee itself is, we're focused on the athletic side. But it was, we had some good feedback there too. Lot of support.
Nathan, when you mentioned the 11.
Yep.
Before we, just my opinion, we started calling it a number, I think we should be calling it a seat. Are you talking a 700 seat or 1400 seat?
Well, the 11 million plan has 1400 in there. 1423 seats. You know, and that, we're gonna change the design, you know, probably a few times once we actually dig into this thing. So I don't, that could fluctuate, give or take, but right now, it's about a 1400 seat.
But that seating amount, just to clarify, as we stated last month, is not what's driving the size of the facility, it's the facility size.
Yes.
Allowed that amount of seating.
Right. Because of the two ports that would run east and west, the room is already there to add a seat. You know, I, I do get questions, well, is this really a need? Well, we have a competition, Jim, and I recognize that, but we also have the space where if we wanna really look long-term, it's probably the right thing to do now, since we're doing this anyway, add the seating immediately and just be done with it. The cost, and talking to Mr. Squiers today, the cost is not a whole lot more to just put the seats in right away. And if you try to do that down the road, it's probably gonna be added cost. Where if we just rip the bandaid off right now, probably more economically responsible to do that. I did go down to the Clear Lake, we went to, we played duel in volleyball. Went down to their place, they just built a new gym. And they've already had some things that, you know, he said, you'll probably be the same way, but we had some things we'd do different now and things like that. Their media platform isn't quite big enough for their, for their needs and they didn't have enough space in between the walkways. So we're gonna have some things that we really wanna find too to make this thing, you know, done right. But at the end of the day, I think we can do that with that, with that dollar figure. The dollar figure and square footage is probably where we needed it. I don't know, am I, anything else, guys? I don't, I don't know.
Were you able to look into those grants at times, Nathan?
Yep, we did, we visited with Mike Rosig that, we went to City Hall with him a couple of weeks ago. And he doesn't, doesn't think there's a lot out there as far as what the city can do, just because it is kind of attached with a school. I looked in, there is a, there's a Casey's grant out there that I wanna look into, but it doesn't open until October 1st for schools, for towns that have a Casey's in it. And the dollar amount can fluctuate. So I still think there's things out there that we can look into. But again, I think that'll just come with, you know, a little more research.
You ladies over here have any comments?
I wish some of the naysayers could've came to the volleyball matches last week just to see, you know, pulling the people out of the stands, knocking it down from two courts to one. The 90-degree temperatures in there. I keep saying it's time, but it's time. It is, we need, something needs to happen.
Well, at our junior high, there are benches in bleachers. So it's so packed, I mean, you have no spot to sit. They're right there, the coach is right there.
We have balls constantly going out of the other courts too, disrupting play. It's probably, we haven't had, to my knowledge, we haven't had a major injury with that, with somebody leaping up and then a ball from the other court coming down. But we certainly could. I mean, that's, it's probably only a matter of time. Whereas if that thing was in the other gym, it works. There's a lot of benefit to getting that secondary facility built up there.
I will say that I've been at the last two volleyball games at home and I was not able to sit in the bleachers. I sat on the steps. And this is the first year I've seen our steps completely full for both games. There's not, there's not enough room in the bleachers right now for our volleyball games. We're only doing the 7th and 8th and C-team to B-team.
And that probably would happen, it's a problem.
It's a good problem. I mean, it's, I mean, I saw people putting their stadium chairs up on the steps that are on the south end of the armory. There's just not enough room right now. I will also say that I went to duel and I was one of the first individuals that when I went to your meeting, I thought that, you know, we really were more at that 750-seat gym. And I told that to your group and there is no question after going to duel and that place holds around, was it 750 to 800? Am I correct on that, Nathan?
Their new gym is 1300.
13?
Yeah.
It didn't look like, it barely fit Webster and duel for that volleyball game. I actually looked at that and said, if we build this in Webster, Webster would not be, be happy. It's, it's too small. Okay?
Hey, I guess I'll say, I still have the same concerns that I've always had, but I have decided I will go along with this if the pledges, donations, and naming rights go towards the bond. My reason for that is the district's gonna carry the money, the loan handler. So, if it really does, I mean, if you say you can raise money, I'll just take your word for it, but, pledges have no recourse, so it's really not that big a deal, in my view. But they have to go towards, any of those monies have to go towards the bond.
I think, Mark, I throw out right away, I think that's a good position. I think that's what 95% of most people that would make pledges would be. Now, at the same time, I think that we would have to, if we were to do something like that, we would still have to consider the scenario that a donor would say, I will donate specifically for, I'll just, cause we're talking about volleyball, I'm gonna say new volleyball, what's the word? Standards that hold the thing up. If somebody was to make a donation for a specific thing, I think we'd have to on that request, right? But if they're general pledges, you're saying the guy go towards the bond?
Pledges are naming rights or donations.
I don't disagree with that.
I did talk to Nathan and he told me he thought comfortably they could raise $2 million.
I, I, and with the 350, we've already got kitty. We've got some energy here, we've got some people that'll go out and knock on doors and, and do some good things, I think. I don't know, Nathan, guys, is that unreal? I think we can do it.
I always have problems with pledges. For one reason, this is a 20-year bond. If you're gonna take a pledge from me, I'll be 87 when it's paid off. If you're not gonna get my pledge, I'm sorry, there's a 70% chance I won't even be here.
I'll bet on it for you.
Mark, we can just take more upfront than.
Well, I'm just saying, that's my reasons for my, a five-year pledge, much different. 20 years.
I think just, I mean, every pledge, every donation, every recipient of that has to consider who the donor is. There's, you know, just because somebody says they're gonna pledge an amount, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to consider that pledge as a true value. If Joe Blow has a history of not paying any of his bills and says, I'm gonna pledge $10,000, then I feel that your group should put $0 of value on that. That's a, that's fond money. And we have seen that in the past, in the last 25 years. But Dade County, for what it's worth, I think has been very good on its pledges. I know that we paid off, the Bearcat pledge helped pay off the original high school early. The track and the football field, we've been able to pay that off early because of the additional pledges that came in. I know that the swimming pool, we only had on that one, I think out of over the $1 million pledged, I think it's close to 4,000. So I mean, is that, you know, four tenths of a percentage point that didn't come through? We were really lucky. So the key part is that if we're accepting pledges, we have to make sure that we value the pledges at an appropriate amount. I think that's the key.
Laurie. So under Mark's scenario, which I agree with, as these pledges come in, would it be, your understanding that we would apply them to the backside of the bond? Therefore, it would exponentially save on interest costs over the course of a loan? I don't know.
I would have to talk to Meyer Henry about that because sometimes you can't do anything like within the first five or seven years. So we would have to just hold that money until, I mean, if it's going specifically for moms only.
But in that scenario, if we could go find four or five percent at each point.
Right.
We could cut our interest.
So there's two ways that that can be done. Number one, with the Bearcat pledge, I don't remember what we passed that first high school. It was either 800,000 or 900,000 was the bond. It was nine. And we raised 60,000 after the vote passed that we could put in immediately, so the bond was only eight-four. The same thing with the swimming pool project, we raised money that we could put down immediately, but then we had a period of time where we couldn't prepay, I wanna say it was four years on that one. And at that time, we invested in CDs at Dakota Bank, which were earning interest, so that when you came in, they were able to do it.
That's, you could normally prepay on the bond, let's say if you had, if you took pledges. It might be a four-year caveat.
Sometimes three, sometimes five.
Most, most of the time you can pay.
Can you refinance if interest rates drop?
Well, you could pay.
See, you're gonna have a lot of options here.
You refinance it when interest rates drop. That happens all the time.
I mean, we just did the CTE in reverse. We borrowed the low-interest money, put it on ice.
And then got high interest.
Made a lot of money.
And made a lot of money. This is, that reversed.
And look, the previous projects that we've had, we have refinanced, you know, like the one we refinanced it two different times and saved up, you know.
A significant amount.
Absolutely.
We paid the bond, in Rosig, we had a 20-year bond, we paid it off in like eight or nine years. You just saved a ton of interest as you could prepay it. There was no, there was no penalties on that one. Some of them might, I don't know, that's just.
I just know the last one that we had on the high school, we had to wait, cause you, Bearcat pledge donated and then we had to wait another five years before we could pay off the next.
And then we just came in with a significant check. And it did go on the back end, that's correct. And I think that we could make that a policy so you didn't have, Mark.
Well, this has to be about the options.
Putting that towards the lunch trays or something.
If it's in the, whatever, if it's in the minutes or whatever.
Other comments?
To build out what Nathan talked about with the meeting with the city, we did have a really, I think, productive discussion about a lot of these items that we saw here in red and yellow and what kind of partnerships we could maybe explore with that. There was some talk about having both of our property committees come together and talk about those options. So I think we've opened the door with them, we'll see what happens from there. I think to also build on that, I did put a call into ECOG just to explore some of those grant opportunities. It's probably not likely, but we're gonna try, we're gonna see maybe what kind of offenses on the sheet might be eligible for certain funds. So we'll see. We're kinda doing our due diligence in that way too, just to help bring those numbers down. Aaron came with too, so I don't know if you have any other additions.
They're willing to help out in some forms. It's probably not gonna be a long song. Okay, any other comments from your group, Nathan? Folks to the left.
I will say one of the overwhelming themes I've been getting, I've been getting a lot of comments about the project. Mainly positive. But a lot of people are just, you know, saying, if we're gonna do this, let's do it. Don't build it too small, don't, you know, just, just make sure that we haven't, you know, cut too much already. And I think, I'm in agreement that the 1400 seat is the right size. I think it gives us options, in my opinion. I like, I really like your idea, Mark. That also allows us some options to save money down the road. I think there are some things on this sheet that we may or may not have to do that we could, you know, possibly save a few dollars, but we gotta, we gotta start somewhere. You know, in my opinion, once we call, once we vote to either approve or not approve, going to a public vote, we have to put a number on the form that's in our board packet, correct?
Correct.
We have to come up with a dollar amount. I just, I wanna make sure that I'm clear that if we put that dollar amount in there and at that point, then we're going to the architect and we're coming out with plans and we're going to bids, we still, if the project comes in over budget, we have the opportunity to put the brakes on it. If it comes in under budget, the bond is just gonna be less.
I'd agree.
So essentially, what we're doing is putting our best number forward tonight and letting the taxpayers.
I think that's the, that's the question is, A, I think it's good for the taxpayers to get a chance to vote on this. We take this to a vote, it's November 4th, I believe is the first Tuesday. That is the general election this year. It would need a 60% plus one to pass. I think it's good to get it out there. I think what it would be, would be a 20-year, no matter what number you put, it's a 20-year bond that we would be calling for. Question is, is as to the number. And I just wanna make sure that, from my perspective, after seeing Clear Lake the other night, that gym is too small. That is not, if we build that, I really do believe if we built what Clear Lake had the other night in Webster, people would be disappointed. I don't know, was anybody else there that night? I don't know, was anybody else there that night? Well, obviously. Coaching, what did you think from it, Sam? If you mind asking, put you on the spot.
No, that's fine. I had similar thoughts. Like, I walked in and I was like, oh, okay, it's a nice facility, but not a lot of room for what we wanna do. So, I had similar thoughts in that regard.
I even thought the walls were at, one point in time, there was one of those walls that, I mean, it's a, it's a brick wall, there is no padding on it, and I thought to myself, boys' basketball games, somebody is going to hit that at some point in time, flying around. It is, it's tight.
Yeah, I visited with the AD a lot that night. He said basketball doubleheaders are especially tricky. It gets really, really tight with the basketball doubleheader, and all the schools are going to doubleheaders now. So, that, I mean, you have to build your gym with the expectation that you're gonna host doubleheaders.
We were there last year for a basketball doubleheader, and as a parent sitting in the stands, that's harder, because the coach is trying to coach your kids, you don't wanna be hearing it, seeing it, involved in it, but you have no choice.
You're sixty, probably.
Yeah, that's right.
That's tough, that's tough as a parent.
The coach doesn't like that either, because you get the, you know, you get the crowd trying to overhear what's going on in the huddle, and that's none of their concern. But, yeah, it's not, that's not a good situation though.
One thing that I might add, I think with Clear Lake or Tool, I'm saying this because we get a lot of criticism, as the school is, community, they have a lot of opinions about these. And on their behalf, they probably did the best they could with that.
Sure, exactly.
I'm wondering if they weren't a little bit landlocked, which is something we've discussed here, as to where, when, how was the best option. If you look at everything to the east of that building, that's their only driveway to that big, huge parking lot to the south of that new gym. There's another entrance that you can't come down because it's on Hospital Street. So, that might be part of why that is the size it is, because they were landlocked. So, on their behalf, they probably made it as large as they could.
And I wanna be clear, I'm not disparaging, beautiful location, beautiful place, but I just said, if we are going to do it, I do think we should do it right. And I was somebody that was thinking that we should try to get it smaller, and I was wrong. It definitely needs to be that size that you have it, in my opinion. My question is, is 11 million for the board, is that enough if you also do any improvements to the armory channel?
Well, I wanted to touch on that. So, you know, obviously, I made a motion last month, and my training thought at the time was, I wanna go for the 1,400 seat, I wanna get as many upgrades as we can. And I thought, calling, you know, my motion for the 11 million, and then I challenged this group to go out and raise the other two to get us to that 12 to 13. Well, now we're kinda talking about doing that in reverse, so I wanna make sure that we don't start too low.
Though, we were discussing that amongst ourselves, we had some concerns with that, like, that's kinda why we settled on that 11 million number, is because we were gonna go out and raise the extra X amount of money to give the facility we want. We thought 11 million was, you know, as responsible of a number as we could, we could make it and still get our functionality, and still try to do right by the taxpayers, but then we were gonna go out and raise the necessary funds after that to get the facility that we want. If we're, like you're saying, if we're going in the reverse now, where the number's 11, but everything that we raise is just going to knock that number down, I think we're in trouble. It's not gonna...
Oh, I don't think we're in trouble. 11 million is what I, that, if you guys start asking for too much, you're gonna, you're gonna get pulled back.
Well, I disagree. In my opinion, you know, we're looking at these numbers, total with optional upgrades, what's the difference here between the 13, 3, and 12, 3?
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I thought you guys said 11 million was gonna cover everything we want, that's not really different.
The needs. It does. But the problem is, the armory itself needs so much infrastructure done to it. That's, that's where that extra comes from. That's where we would've thought, okay, let's go, let's go put some boots on the ground and go raise that, and then that way you're not hammering away at your guys' capital outlay and everything else, and putting a burden on the school. I agree with Tyler, it would, that would complicate it. I don't know. We have to cut corners, I think, and I don't wanna do that.
So, like, one of the things that's on, so when we talk about upgrades, I'm gonna read off, just so, matter of fact, Lori, you have this document, could you go make copies for everybody so that we can bring them out, share it with the group, and also with the board? For example, one of the issues with the current armory is it is recommended that we upgrade the main service, including our fire alarm, and that's just what it's down here, it's a short synopsis. The expanded description is as follows. Any additions or improvements to the building, or to add cooling to the building, the service will need to be upgraded from 800 amp to a minimum of 1,200 amp. You would have to replace the fire alarm system to meet current codes supporting emergency notification. The existing electrical service for the building is, I'm not gonna read it, because I'll screw it up and everybody will make fun of me, but it's not right, okay? So, that's the way I interpret it as the lawyer. The existing fire alarm system consists of a main fire alarm control panel, horn slash strobe notifications, smoke protectors, and manual pole stations. That's an upgrade that they predict to be $157,000. Now, the issue, I think, that's something that's, in my opinion, it's in red on this document, because we pretty much are gonna have to do it. Either that's gonna come out of our capital outlay budget, or we budget for it within the bond and pay for it over the 20 years. The optional things that are in here, was a good example of air conditioning. I think that was in here as one of the...
Yes, air conditioning is $420,000.
Right, so then, you know, the question is, if we were to air condition the new facility, would you need to air condition the old facility? Or could you put off the $420,000, because you have, you know, one facility air conditioned for the one month, two months out of the year? I think those are the questions that you have, but I wanna get it as low of a number as we can, but at the same time, I don't want us to be saying, well, we ended up making a mistake, because we should've had that extra $157,000 that they have in there right now to upgrade the main service for the electrical. The other thing is, is that now with new building codes, again, that you didn't have in the 1950s, it includes a sprinkler system. We've had to upgrade everything that we do in the school now. Correct me, gym is sprinkler. Obviously, the old high school didn't have a sprinkler system. Obviously, the elementary didn't have a sprinkler system. But that is the times we live in. A new sprinkler system is $153,000. So, that's the number, I just, I don't know if it's gotta be the 13 number, if it's something less, I don't know that.
Well, we have to be, you know, we've got our total with optional upgrades in yellow is 13.2. The total without the pink upgrades is 11.8.
Right.
So, that, to me, is where the 1,400-seat competition gym is. And by eliminating the yellow items, we can save approximately a million dollars. I am good with putting all of those things in yellow, with the exception of the roofing on the old armory. Can you guys elaborate on that at all?
Where we look for replacement?
Could be the third yellow one down, EXT dot two. And that's replacing the existing roof on the old armory.
It says on here, existing original roofing system has been patched in several areas and is about at its life expectancy. Existing insulation value is unknown, but presumed inadequate per term energy code. Now, that's a, again, if we don't do, I mean, that's a $675,000 hit at some point in time from the armory.
In my opinion, that one could come back to haunt us. But the rest of these in yellow, since we, in my opinion, since we're going to the 1,400-seat venue, it would become the new competition gym, I don't think we need these. I don't think we need to remove Tom's carpet panels on the roof. I think we can get by with the existing showers, or we can try to handle that in-house.
Or it could be put off for another day.
Yeah. But, in my opinion, just because I don't know the answer to that.
And does the group leak today? I mean, that's my knowledge, Mike told me as far as that goes.
It has leaked, though. Definitely, there's no question, it's leaked. I mean, during our time on the board, we've patched on that roof.
So, in my mind, it's that 11, 8, plus the 675. Again, we don't have to spend those dollars. But we need to call for enough if we're gonna do this in reverse.
I don't, I don't see why you need to call more than 11, I really don't. I just, I just think the public's gotta push back.
Mark, can you say more about that? Like, your thought process on that? Like, like, we don't need more than 11?
Oh, well, we don't, I don't think we need air conditioning, number one. There's not air conditioning in there, no, that's it. To me, the roof, yeah, maybe, but if you're gonna replace the whole roof, I don't know. I'm just going by what I hear in the public. It's gonna be a tough sell anyway. So, my view has always been, go for something that I, that you're pretty sure is gonna sell.
So, the 11, 8 is giving us what we want, it's just not doing anything with the existing armory?
Correct.
Correct. The red, that's without the optional.
Right, but some of them we have to do.
Yeah, I think that roof is one that, if we don't fix that roof, people are just, that's just...
And here's another one, folks. In the pink number, the 11, 8, we've got a new sprinkler system in the old armory. Again, do we need that if that's not the competition?
Is that gonna be required though?
I think they thought it was required. Yeah, they said that was gonna be required, if you were doing upgrades to local facilities as soon.
It's either required, or I think we have to create a firewall that is acceptable between the current armory and the new facility, which I think is, is a balance between prosperity against that versus a sprinkler system. We have a sprinkler system where things have to go in the future. But I couldn't tell you the difference, I don't know where it's located. I'm not sure if Tom Squires is the term. The difference between maybe some firewall.
You know, as far as the city was concerned, I should mention too, that they were willing to take a look at our current agreement or arrangement, the contractors they have with, well, yeah, and Aaron, you know, they don't know what that number would look like or whatever, but they do know that that hasn't been updated in a long, long time. So, not that they could knock out any of these projects in one swoop, but they could maybe help us incrementally over time, because there still will be a lot of community events in there. So, the city's willing to, I think they're willing to help out a little bit with some of those things.
Yeah, they're putting, I understand this right, the total without optional upgrades. The one, basically what they're saying, you need to bring the armory into code, is, am I reading this right, is 11, 8, correct? 11, 8, 5, 1. Is that what you're reading? Is that what you're, yeah? And I still don't think that, they call that roof replacement an optional upgrade, I don't think that's an optional upgrade, but that's just me. I mean, I agree with you, Mark, I don't think we need to put, I wouldn't say you have to put air conditioning in the main armory if you have it in the new part. That could be something that could be added on as an update down the road, that $420,000. At the same time, so $420,000 over 20 years is $20,000. I get it, it's at interest, but do we have our district patrons saying, why didn't we just air condition it at that point in time? I feel like we do have a lot of people, just about every facility we've done in the community over the last 25 years, either saying, A, I'm glad we did it right, or B, I wish we would've done better. That's, I don't know, that's what I feel like, sometimes people are saying. Did we get that locker, the girls' visiting locker room, at least like some dividers in there, Nathan, this year?
Yeah, I've got it. They're not installed yet, but they are up at the new part, or the, the old CTE, we've taken them out of there, they're in route.
They're in route? Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we should, folks, the girls' locker room used to be, first of all, there was no girls' locker room in the original armory, it was only men's. And when we did put a girls' locker room in there, it was very small. It still has, you know, the two urinals that are meant for guys, and there's no dividers, there's no curtains, there's no nothing. We've gotta fix that stuff up. I mean, we can do better as a district. There's some of those things. The place is 75 years old, we have to invest in it at some point in time. I think at least 2 million bucks. And I'm not saying, but that's something that's gonna come due to the district at some point in time. If you keep that facility for another 75 years?
The bones are good.
Are you sure as heck couldn't build the armory for 11 million?
No, I think Squires said it cost 20 million to rebuild the armory.
To just re, to build the armory as is?
The armory now would be like 20 million.
I mean, that was a good investment 75 years ago, thank goodness they did it then, yes? We were really lucky. Webster has a good facility.
I am right, 11 million is a lot of dollars, guys. That's, I mean, I don't think that's a lot of money.
Well, I'd like to buy a new pickup for 20,000, and I can't. I gotta base my decisions off of the facts and figures that are presented to us. I do, I do like, here, I'm gonna play it in reverse. I made a motion last month for 11 million dollars, hoping these guys could raise two, that's 13 million. If I do my math this way, and I have the 675 with the 11, 8, I got 12.5 million. We're coming in half a million less, and it's gonna exponentially save the district taxpayers dollars, that are gonna be killing interest.
What is the tax difference between the 11 million and the 13 million for us, realistically?
Nathan, do you have that calculator? Can you go step out? Do you have it on your phone, or do you have it on our own computer?
Well, 2 million dollars over 20 years, that's pretty...
She's just guided by the valuation.
Yeah, right now, if 11 million's 98 cents, I mean, an extra two is maybe...
I think my name is at 13, 107, I believe it's.
So, we're talking about 9 cents?
Yeah.
Per thousand?
I can go look it up for sure.
So, if you have 100 thou, if you have a $1,000, it'd be 9 cents. If you have a $10,000 property, it would be 90 cents. So, if you have, make sure I'm doing my math right, any mathematicians in here? $100,000 property, I'm really good at this, Gavin, trust me on it, it'd be nine bucks.
For the year?
The year.
So, why are we not just doing the 13 million? That makes zero sense to me.
Well, $100,000, I mean, that's...
No, it doesn't.
It is valuation.
Yeah, yeah.
Valuation.
It's a valuation.
I'm just saying, if all these need upgrades, why are we not just gonna do it now when we can and just get it done? The costs are just gonna keep going up. So, all of this seems like a no-brainer to me. And us being the young crowd that are gonna have kids in this facility, I'd rather have this all upgraded now for them to utilize for years to come, instead of in five years, oh, shoot, we should've done it then.
So, if I did my math right, it would be... it would be 9 cents per thousand, 90 cents per 10,000, $9 per 100,000. Valuation, remember, not what you sell your home for, but what its taxable valuation is. At a million dollars, it would be 90 bucks. So if you have a million dollars of taxable valuation, it would be $90. Somebody please check my math. This is what we're talking about.
I will jump off what you just said, and a couple things. Like you, I, I tend to be more progressive in how I think about investing in the future. We heard, I think, a common theme at our public meetings this summer around regret, that we, that we built something that doesn't really work for us because we were concerned about the money. And we have to be, I mean, we're using public dollars to invest in our students and our community. But, I also think, on the flip side, we have taken a look at the plan. We started with a 15 million dollar plan.
18.
18, excuse me.
18.
And, and we've, we've made so, I think, some responsible choices. And, I, I, that's where I appreciated seeing this breakdown last month, because we're building a new facility, but we have to, that isn't gonna be as nice unless we do some of these things too. We need both, I think, for the longevity of that whole facility. So, that's where I tend, I'm, I'm with you, as a young parent, as a parent, excuse me, as a parent of young kids.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying. So, that's my thoughts from where I sit.
And that's at current interest rates? If the Fed was to drop interest rates, I mean, we might lose that 7 cents anyway, just be under the buck, if you even drop it a quarter point.
Those interest rates will play big, they'll have a big impact on those.
Right.
We hope they come down.
If they come down, you know, a quarter or a half a point, it is a significant savings. I think, what, what is our CTE, 1.9? 2.9?
Interesting.
Yeah.
I think it's 2.1.
2.1. We're not gonna get lucky like that again, but we hit that just perfect. 20-year bond at 2.1?
Well, I'll bet you we got basically just about 0%. So we've had two, two great projects.
You know, for what it's worth, your sentiment, I hear that a lot. I come at the football game in Groton, the football game in Salem, I had patrons coming up and telling me these things. I was at the Thrashing Show in Andover, I had people coming up to me and just, do it, do it right, get it done right. I was at an auction sale south of town yesterday, and I got hit up by numerous individuals that are notos, you know, school age or with school-aged children, they were older, you know, gentlemen. And if you're gonna do it, do it right. That's, has been the overwhelming sentiment I have received.
You know, and I think, and this is a good time to bring up, I mean, one of the questions that was asked was, where's our enrollment at? And I had made sure that Lori put in the back of our packets, I think that one of our patrons asked at the meeting in Roslyn if we could create a graph that would show what our enrollment was. And so if you go to the very last page of your packets, before we get into our, you know, fine budget numbers, I think, correct Lori, is where you had it? Trying to find it now.
It was right after the resolution, was that what you said?
Yes. Right before you get to the, for your information.
89.
Yep. You know, last year, we were at, for 2024, we were at, was it 535 on, on, was that what the number was?
2025, 535 was the verified number.
535 was our verified number. That was versus 530 the year previous, 507 the year previous, 519 and 520 the years previous to that, 527 the years previous to that. So we were at our, at that point in time, we were at our second highest number last year for the last 20 years. So our enrollment has been in a very good position, and can I say on TV where our enrollment is right now, or will I be struck by lightning, Lori?
I would kill James' sauce.
All right, so I won't say, but we're cautiously optimistic, you know, for this, this upcoming year, that our numbers are gonna continue to keep going up. And I do think that, Nick, as you said at the last meeting, this is important to, we're in, we're in a battle to attract people to this community. And our competition is not Groton, it's not Brit, it's not Clark. Competition's Harrisburg, folks. If we're gonna get the people that are this age, that are out in front of us, not my age, to be moving back to Webster, that's who we've gotta compete with, is the bedroom communities around Sioux Falls, I would say Groton, the bedroom communities around Aberdeen, any community that's a bedroom community to a double A school, we've gotta compete. If we wanna bring back the workers and the future generation, we gotta have things here for them.
I'll piggyback off that, Tom. I coach an 11-man football team with 23 players on the roster right now. And I'm doing everything in my power to keep that number from shrinking even lower. And my genuine fear is that guys, kids, families, they're gonna start jumping ship because they think they can get better opportunities for their kids elsewhere. And I get it, I, I got skin in the game now, I got a little guy at home. I want him, when he grows up, to absolutely have the best opportunities. The point is, I want him to have those opportunities here, not, not somewhere else. I wanna be here, I want him to have the opportunities here. So I, I get it, I get it. If you think your kid has a better opportunity to do things somewhere else, more, I don't blame you, but the point is, I want our kids to feel that they have those opportunities here.
I agree, Tyler, I think that's, I mean, that's what we do, I mean, we all make decisions, that's why being on school board's tough. You're dealing with the most, two most important things to people, number one, they're children, number two, money. And there is no question, we've got a really good group of young folks in the community. I went to that napkin place in our open house on, last Wednesday night, that place is phenomenal. That is just unbelievable, that will be a great, I think, attraction to hopefully get people to live in this community. I was talking with a, a mother whose daughter lives in Sioux Falls, and she can't find daycare, so she's right now a stay-at-home mom. I'm like, move up here, you know, you can get that daycare and they can go to work and their husband works remote. I think that is what we have to be in competition for, for the next 20, 25 years.
Well, I'm from one of those, I was on, in this, my kids were in school in Roslyn, as most of you know. I did not look at the school for facilities, I looked at it for education. Most people don't jump ship because they got a nicer football field.
Look at, look at, look at our enrollment rate now, Mark, they're leaving because of wrestling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've lost two kids.
It's happening right now.
Times have changed.
I'm just telling you guys.
You're either progressing with it, or you're stuck.
And that's part of having a quality, quality staff is recruiting new, young, vibrant coaches, teachers, and just bringing these people into the building.
So what it comes down to, gents, then, gotta come up with a number, because I get the sentiment that we're all for putting it towards a vote, it just seems like, but just what is the number? Marcus said he's at 11? Where's the wrestling group at?
He's at 11 with all donations going towards that.
Correct.
So, if it's 11-8, you gotta come up with that 8 somewhere. If that's what it came down to.
Yeah, correct. Yep, yep. You'd have to come up with the 8 out of, because if we got 8 in donations, then it would only be 10-2 with what you're saying, right, Mark?
How's that now?
So, what Aaron, what Aaron just said was that you're at 11 with all donations going towards the bond. And so what Aaron said, if it was 11-8, you'd have to come up with the 800,000 somewhere else, even if they raised 800,000, because 8, you would say it would be a 10.2. Correct, Bond?
I didn't say anything about 10.2, all I said was the donations and pledges have to go to the bond, right?
Right, so if there was hypothetically, if there was 800,000 dollars in donations, then you'd say the bond should be 10.2?
Nope. It's not gonna be, you're gonna make the motion anyway, that's, whatever you make motion to call for the bond, that's what the bond is.
No, you can always, you can have, so you can make, just like we were talking about with the Bearcat pledge, it went to the voters at 800,000. We were able to raise at that time 60,000, I think it was within like two weeks, we had to have the, the cash or whatever it was, for whatever reason. But we were able to come up with 60,000 cash. So that dropped the bond, that we took out then to 740. That was what, my understanding is of what you were saying.
No.
No, you're okay if we raised 800, and then the bond came in at 11, and the thing was at 11-8, you'd be okay then saying, we're good?
No, it has to go to the bond.
That's what I'm saying, it should be 10.2.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah. So then, the math don't work then, under, Aaron, what you're saying is correct, Aaron, you would have to come up with 800,000 somewhere else.
Well, you have to put a number somewhere, I mean.
Correct.
To, to call for a bond. I mean, you.
Correct, but what you're saying is, what he's saying is over here, is that if we do it at 11, and it comes in at 11-8, we have to come at 800, we would have to figure out 800,000 somewhere else, correct? That's what you're saying, Aaron.
Of course you would. That's, that's not 11, it's 11-8, so 11 is.
And if they have raised 800,000, under your scenario, that wouldn't work, because you would say it should be 10.2, is what you just said.
All I said is it has to go to the bond, yes, so.
Right, so we'd be short 800,000. So that's my question, you guys gotta decide on a number. You're at 11 with all things two. Aaron, you were asking the question, saying, well, if we're gonna do it this way, then we have to figure, the way I take it is, we gotta figure the number in backwards. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah. Otherwise, unless they get donations that are specific to certain things in the project, then it would, then it can make it work, but if you, if you've got the 11 million bond, and it comes in at 11-8, we gotta find the 800,000 somewhere.
Correct.
Because if they got donations at 800,000, just for the same number, that comes off the 11 million, not off the.
11-8.
11-8.
I just think there's more people willing to pay even with 13 million than you think there are. And we're the younger group here, and we're the ones with the kids in the school and utilizing it, I will be the first one to say, I absolutely said the playground looks like a prison when it was.
Prison yard, I think.
Yeah, prison, prison yard. When it was being torn up. And then I went back and I, you know, apologized, but, you know, that football field, I think a lot of people thought that was gonna be insane too, but that is utilized so much, even kids, I go to my parents' house, and there is 20 kids playing football there, and it's great. But, you know, that was extra funds, that probably didn't need to be put towards it, but if you're being proactive for these kids, it's also keeping them out of trouble, and it's being utilized. I mean, how many kids are playing football on Saturdays? I mean, the three, I mean, it's, it's time. You know, there's, these are big classes coming up.
Every, every single recess, it's full. I, I utilize it for PE class.
So I just don't think we should be cutting corners, I mean, sure, we might not need AC in the new, or the older unit, it'd be great, but whatever. Ceiling, carpet, whatever, that's fine, but I still think it should be at the 13 million, and I guess if there's leftovers, you don't, you don't actually have to use it, whatever. But I just don't think you should be coming in lowballing it, because you know how the world is.
So, I, I like what Chelsea's saying is, if we go for 13 and let us raise money to knock it off like Mark wants to, hopefully we can get it down to 11 million. But we can't cut ourselves short and make a, as a good friend of mine used to say, half acid, let's do it right. Let's shoot, aim high, I'm not, I'm not an Air Force guy, but aim high. But let's, let's go for it, and let us fundraise and get that down to 11 million hopefully, and, and get the right facility.
And he said if it comes in under budget, we don't have to utilize the full budget, correct?
Correct, absolutely, so if we, if we took, let's say hypothetically, 11 million and the bond, the project comes in at 10.5, yeah, then it goes without saying, you only take 10.5. The bond, how it works is the, first of all, if the issue passes, once the issue passes, then at that point in time, you retain the architects and to spend the big money to actually put together the detailed plans, which at that point in time can be put out for bids. And then, once they're put out for bids, and you have the award, you award the bid, then at that point in time is when you go out and call for the bond. Now, obviously, there could be circumstances, if we thought interest rates were falling and we wanted to catch it, you could do it sooner in that process, but that's usually how it works 98% of the time.
As the contractor, sitting in the room, I'm sitting here saying, kind of thinking of Chelsea's thinking, why are we beating our heads against the wall? We need to call for a number, find out if the voters support it, I think they do, I think she's right. And it's called alternates. The AC, that'd be nice, you bet. It's an alternate. Fixing the ceiling tiles, it's an alternate. Maybe this thing comes in at 10 and a half million, we, we don't know, we just, we gotta take the next step. Every, every one of these things in yellow can be an alternate on the bid, and then we can decide after the bids come in, where's this thing at? What do we need, what don't?
The pool, the slide was an alternate too. Because the bids came in low, we were able to do the alternative.
I mean, personally, I would love to see a pool put in this, but, you know, that's probably unrealistic, but it would give kids something to do in the wintertime as well, you know, for the whole family, that would be great, doesn't have to be anything massive, but, you know, I'm sure that's another couple million, but, again.
Well, folks, I think we just gotta pick a number. So Mark's at 11, where is everybody else at?
I'm at 13.
I'm at 13.
And, and I think my rationale for that is because we don't know until we try, and we have a group that's put a lot of work in, and I think we should go task it. So.
I'm at 11, but I would, I want the donations to go to upgrade everything. That way, there's more incentive, there's more drive, when I go, when I go to a donor, they say, hey, we, if we can get this much money, we can get this next level of whatever we want, we can get whatever in here done. So the donate, I would say 11, but the donations are on top.
Okay, I'll give a caveat, the pledges have to go to the 11, but your donations, pledges can't be above, because we're gonna carry the debt anyway. So just the pledges, if you got donations. I won't give on the pledges because they have no recourse. The district is gonna carry, I mean, I can't, I can't look the voters in the eye and say that they can't go towards the, towards the bond, because they have no recourse. So I, I just simply can't look the voters in the eye and tell them honestly that those pledges could go up above and beyond, because the district's gonna carry the bag anyway.
Because if you go with the 13 right off the bat and it passes, for people that might donate, or that are on the line, on the fence of donating, the meeting's already paid for, so why do I have to?
Well, these guys said 11 last month was more than enough, so that's why I.
Under Aaron's scenario.
Well, it's still, if the pledges go, I mean, if you have donations, they can, I just go wherever you want.
You think, you do think you could get to that level if we did the eleven and the donations were on the top?
Yeah, I think so.
You could get to what you want.
What's that number?
That puts more drive in there.
Well, I would tell you this.
I've had ten messages in the last five seconds.
I've got a lot of messages too, also.
Wait, there's people that could, there's people that definitely know how to text your local school board member with some great comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if I wanna donate twenty thousand to go to a kick ass scoreboard, that money has to go to the bond and we don't get a kick ass scoreboard, question mark. Now, I guess, depends, that's what we're debating right now. So whoever put that text up here, congratulations, you made Bearcat TV.
Whoever the kick ass is just got their weight.
Yeah. Here's, I would throw this out. I know that you already have cash in hand on one of those. So one of the pledges, there's already, they've already received a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation, cash.
Well, that's not a pledge, that's a donation.
That's cash, right. That's donation cash, I mean, not a pledge. So I, and if you already have, you know, Kate thought you had a hundred thousand and you think you're gonna get more, I mean, I'd even be willing to say right now to subtract that off. Nick, I'd say twelve six fifty, knowing that they already have that. I mean, just as, and then Mark kind of trying to hit down closer towards your number at the same time, not quite doing it the way you're doing it, doing it more the way Mark's doing it. But I could go at twelve six fifty because I know they already have that money in hand. Does that make sense what I'm telling your group? But I think we gotta calculate in the upgrades to the armory. I really do. We're lucky with that. That's a seventy-five year, seventy-five year old building. It's a great facility. We want that here in another seventy-five years. I mean, we'll all be gone by that point in time. And if we can make that, that's a phenomenon, that's a home run for our community. But what it's gonna cost is twenty million to build a new one, two million, ten percent of upgrades, that doesn't, you know, it really doesn't seem like much. When you put it that way.
And we're still gonna need that. We still need the armory.
Yeah. Not only the school, the whole community needs it.
Yes.
I'm at twelve million six fifty. There you go, guys. So you got two at thirteen, you got two at eleven with different ones. So now we gotta figure out where we go.
Does my vote count on what Tom?
Chelsea, I'm gonna, could you put that in writing somewhere because it doesn't happen often?
Well, you're at eleven million, the bond, and then you get your donations if you, if that's what you wanted, so the donations can go on top of it.
Yes, but I think it more comes like, was there gonna be extra costs on top of that as, you know, everything changes? So why would you not want that cushion if you can have it?
You have to sell it to the taxpayers.
I understand that, but I think the people that you're hearing from are probably, no offense, your age generation, and then you have our age generation that is coming in with the kids in the school district right now. And I feel like our vote should matter more personally.
Can you do the number at twelve million six fifty? Could you run it for me off your, off that cover later, please?
What's the interest rate at?
It's still the same, it hasn't changed. Just to find out what it would be.
One point oh six probably.
I think one oh six.
Well, right.
Or one oh five.
Yeah, five.
If we could get it to drop that quarter point between now and November, it'd be nice.
Well, it doesn't really matter.
By next spring anyway. I should, but if that person doesn't wanna donate twenty thousand, we will take the kick ass scoreboard.
Are you still including this?
Yeah. I like the idea of putting it as alternates.
I think the alternates, Aaron, are a way to control down the road here what we actually spend. I mean, my number that I wrote down a half an hour ago was twelve million five hundred and twenty-six dollars. Because that gets us the new goal.
I could go with that. How much is it?
Twelve million five twenty-six, six seventy-five.
So what'd you run it?
Everything in yellow except for the road.
So that would be the carpet, the beautiful Moes carpeted ceiling tiles in the old armory. That would be renovate the existing home team locker room. That would be the air conditioning system and that would be upgrading the, I like how, is that what it's called? The upgrading the existing gang showers and toilets as are dated, are dated and not used to the fullest extent, but that's what is on our sheet as a description. Gang toilets and gang showers.
Aaron, every one of these yellow options that I'm not including can still be alternates. Because we don't know where the bids are gonna come in. And we're not, we're not necessarily cutting them today, we're just formulating.
Exactly. You, you, these are all architects numbers. You don't know where the bids are gonna come in.
Sure, agree.
So I mean, I, I think we're. They might be way under, might be way over. These are only estimates. Architects really, they have an idea, but not a.
Did you guys come here wanting the eleven and then you were gonna fundraise rest or were you looking for more?
Well, we would, we would love the thirteen to put less pressure on us or even twelve five or twelve six fifty, whatever, because it puts less pressure on the group. My thinking was the eleven gets us the actual needs of this, of the new addition, the, the new facility. If you look on the sheet, you've got eleven eight, I think it is.
Yep.
And, and that's with a three quarter of a million dollar contingency. So that's kinda where our group is coming up with the eleven million dollars. Now, if you wanna upgrade the armory in any way, fashion, you know, way, shape or fashion, we can go out and, you know, try to make that happen.
I just think if you don't upgrade the armory, you don't, you have to upgrade it if you're gonna put a brand new facility.
Well, and to be clear, if, if you guys go higher, that doesn't mean we're not still gonna go out and, and work. You know what I mean? We, our motivation is still there. We wanna get this thing done. We, we know what we're asking of the taxpayers. It's not fun to do this, but but it's, we're ready. We, we, we need this thing. I mean, it's.
But when you're fundraising, if you go out and you say, we need an additional six hundred thousand to get this or that, versus saying, what do you wanna give? Because we wanna build a new, if, if we approve the full amount, then, you know, you can't say that we need this amount for them to donate.
I think the majority of people though, Aaron, to be honest, is that they're donating to this because they believe in our cause. It's whether, whether or not they're gonna donate to it, whether or not it's the, they need it or they want it, it's because they want to donate. The pool was no different. On the pool, when we passed that, just so everybody knows, that was, I think, two dollars and sixty-nine cents per thousand. We passed that at sixty-eight or seventy percent, I don't remember what it was, you know?
Aaron, that's the one thing in my head I'm trying to figure out right now is your exact concern. That's a legitimate concern. I like Mark's idea because killing interest is everything. That's what we all try and do in business. Kill, kill, kill interest. So I like that. But I also agree that you could potentially be hamstringing the group a little bit.
But if they go out and they do their fundraising now, that's the way for them to sell it to the community to say, hey, look, we do have a million so we can knock it off in the beginning, and that's how you gotta pass the vote. Because you still gotta pass the vote. Folks, you gotta pass the vote, and that's what we were doing when we were fundraising for the pool. Every dollar that we told people they were getting was, you know, one more reason for somebody to vote yes. We had a million plus reasons to vote yes. If you were against the pool, you were against the city getting a million dollar grant. That's what, that's how we sold it. And so the more money we raised, it helped raise that, that grant, that donation.
But it also helps to get this to pass if you can have it lower.
Correct. What was your number? What was the number?
Base six.
One oh six?
I guess you're right on money here.
I'm kinda confused as to why eleven million isn't enough. When you flat out told me you could raise two million dollars, you're at your thirteen million.
And I still believe we can. But, but under your scenario though, they couldn't use the two.
Yeah, they can.
No, you said that went back.
I said only the pledges. I changed, I said if you wanna raise money by, I said only the pledges, and the only reason my, for that is there's no recourse. So only the pledges have to go to the eleven million.
Can we evaluate the pledges on a one by one basis?
But that, that wouldn't work. Okay, so for example, they have, I know they have right now, they have a donation of two hundred and fifty thousand in the bank.
That's not a pledge.
So what's that?
Well, it's a donation if you've got money in the bank.
Okay, so.
A pledge is.
So let, just know, just, just so I follow through. So where does that two fifty go? Would that be under your proposal, they would be able to go up to eleven million two fifty, or is your proposal ten million seven fifty?
Put it wherever you want. Add it on. Put it on the top. That's what I just said. The pledges have to go into the bond is all. Not the donations. So if you pledge.
He's essentially agreeing with me, but just for pledges.
Just for pledges or, say, Tom, because you, you said pledges, say, uh, just take me, I'll pledge a thousand dollars a year for twenty years.
Good.
That has to go to the bond. Because I'm not paying it. I'm just pledging it. If somebody's got two hundred, if somebody's got cash, different story.
Right, but then the problem would be though is, so let's say, for example, let's use the example of the Day County Community Foundation. If they make a donation to this, that will be in the form of a pledge. So that would have to go to the bond.
Over a month of time or at a one time payment?
Right. A pledge would be over a month of time.
Yeah, you have to.
Well, then, but then the problem is, is that I think that will leave us short on making our goal of that. Because you're gonna need those funds to pay for. I think we should just make it simple, say twelve five and just go raise the money and get up to a million and a half, two million and get it done. That's where I'm at.
So I'm, I'm gonna move to advance the resolution at twelve five.
All right. I got a motion by Nick to advance the resolution at twelve five. You would need then in that resolution, that would be over twenty years, Mark, excuse me, Nick?
Yep.
And the vote would take place on November fourth. Do I have a second? Second. Okay. I got a motion by Nick at twelve five, over twenty years with a vote on November fourth. And I got a second by Joel. And now just from the board's perspective, any further discussion?
So that was the dollar six then, twelve five?
Yeah. I think, well, that was, what were you at, twelve five?
At this point in time.
Yes.
It could change.
Could change. Dollar six. Any other discussion? All right, we'll roll call vote this. Aaron? Nick?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm gonna reluctantly go along with this.
Yes. Motion passes five zero, so there will be a vote on November fourth at twelve point five, over twenty years. I hope that the Caps group really does go out there and then hit this hard. I would like you guys to come back and give us updates as to where you're at with fundraising. If there's ways that we can help you in fundraising, you know, you should reach out to us as soon as possible. But thanks for all the hard work you guys have done so far, but I'm really hoping you can figure out some ways to, to move this needle quickly. Uh, November fourth is literally less than sixty days away. And so whatever we can do to support you, we'd like to see this get done. Thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you, man.
Thank you. All right, with that being said, Gavin, you're up. Everybody leaves Gavin when you start talking. It's like Gavin's gonna be all the time, buddy.
We just hope you didn't have to speed it.
He didn't.
You didn't.
You can go.
All right, so for anybody that doesn't know me, my name is Gavin Sanus. I'm a junior down at SDSU, uh, human bio. I've been to EMT for a year and a half now since the May of twenty twenty-four. During the summers, I come back here when I can and volunteer on the service, uh, here, the volunteer service, and then I work part-time down in Brooklyn. And that's a career service area down there. So when I come here, what I see is unfortunately, I see a big gap in age for our volunteer service. It's me and a couple other young individuals, but then a majority of our workers are about forty and older. And a majority of these people are taking a call. They're retired individuals and they're expected to take call nightly. I believe this week we need Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, no, I'm covering tonight, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday from ten PM to six AM covered. And I think Dave Doulson is stepping up and sleeping in the hospital so he can cover that instead of all of them. We have a dire need for people to join EMS as drivers, as EMTs, all the above. And there's not young people coming to do it. So I thought this was some, something I could help with. Um, I just graduated here two years ago, so I still know the kids, a lot of them. Uh, play football with the senior class now, basketball, all that. So my goal here is to start a cadet program with an optional EMT pathway program. They are two separate entities, uh, that they do not have to, you do not have to be part of one to be part of the other, okay? So the cadet program is basically a job shadow program. The students will be allowed to take call during school and respond to an emergency as an observer. They will have no role on the ambulance other than to be there, watch how EMS is done. And they are under the direct supervision of our EMT, head EMT driver, whoever's in charge on the scene. How the call would work is we're looking to get a radio, hopefully leave with the secretary, and then be able to buzz the kid in and let, release him from school. I already talked to Dr. Block about this, probably about a month ago. Uh, he seemed in favor of it. The EMT pathway is a little bit different, so they can be a cadet and they can be an EMT. This EMT pathway, you get high school credits for it and door credits for this. It's nothing new. We've had this here, um, for years. It just doesn't get any publicity. I, you'll see when I was doing it, unfortunately, it's a big time commitment. Right now, you have to give up one Saturday a month to go down and train. So unfortunately, I had a double header, so I didn't do it. Uh, but I'm working with the people down in Sanford, trying to see if we can change that. But if kids interested in that, I hope that they can do that as well. You can see in the packet I gave you, that first page is an overview of what I would like to start. Second and third page are letters of support. I've worked closely with, uh, an individual from Sioux Falls, Stephanie Hansen, who is the head of the Rural EMS Association. Uh, she has done a lot of data collection on different ambulances from around the state. I think the big thing here to point out is when I was trying to come up with something, uh, to help these young kids, I emailed her and I said, what, where have you seen success? And she knows a lot of towns around the state. And she said eleven. Eleven has had the success because they started this cadet program. They have had twenty kids in class sizes of twenty-five, so juniors, senior class, they have twenty kids in their pro, or sorry, fourteen kids in their program. I assume with our class sizes being thirty-five, we can get twenty kids, you know? So that's my math there. They've had all these kids come through, they haven't had an EMT matriculate out yet, but they don't offer the educational pathway, that would be new. You can see there, after that, there's a liability waiver, um, I stole that from Brookings, and then there's a bylaws that I stole from Lemon, so, uh, it's kind of an odd bunch.
When Gavin and I spoke, we talked about, I asked some questions regarding the elders, whether they think we're to it, what concerns we might come up with HIPAA requirements, um, where's the cred from? And he was able to answer just about eighty of those, as well as talk about Lemon's program, this kind of a model program for what we.
Yeah, that's exactly right. This is a third. School comes first, then sports, and then EMS cadet program. I don't wanna be taking kids away from being a high school kid, um, education should always come first. And then if you wanna play sports, have fun, and then be a cadet, you know? Big thing in medical field is, a lot of people go to med, go through undergraduate, spend, I think my tuition bill is ten thousand dollars a year, or semester, you know? And then they get, after the four years, and they say, I don't want medicine. Well, if you can have them be a cadet program, go in the back of the ambulance and start puking, well, well, maybe you shouldn't be medicine. You know? If you could save that money, I mean, I think it's a win for the students, a win for Webster. You guys are just talking about attracting kids. I don't know, maybe I'm a nerd, but I think this sounds kinda cool, um, and then, you know, I don't see a negative to it.
Well, I don't either. Just exposing them at, at, at a young age gives them, you know, I'll use our business for an example. I mean, we try to get in here and get these, get these young kids and just get them out to the shop and just get them exposed. So then when they go to college, that, you know, they can go work for, it might not be our company, it's for our industry. And you got the same thing here, I mean, you just get them exposed and, and, and get them started. I think when they go to, you know, get out of high school or whatever, go to the next step, they're gonna be, they're gonna know what they wanna do and, you know? We all know we're short on EMS people around here, but I don't think it's just a Webster problem, I think it's a rural America problem.
Yeah, exactly. And, uh, like, North Dakota's been doing this for years. Oaks has a huge program, I think they've been doing it for twenty-plus years. And like you said, they go everywhere. You have these EMT cadets that spread throughout the state, and now they can sit and say, hey, I did this at Oaks, I did this, you know? And now they're nurses, doctors, all throughout the state. I think huge advantage to that. Even if they don't stay here to help, they're gonna go to a different rural service and help there. I think that's exactly what you're talking about.
Oh yeah, this, very good job, young man, you must, guy, you're speaking from your body. What, what do you want from us? Nothing at this point. This is nothing but a good idea, I, I think.
I agree.
What, what?
Ten thousand dollars.
That's not a problem. You just, we just got twelve and a half million, ten thousand more.
You know, there's nothing that I need right now. As far as funding goes, I've talked to the county commissioners, they're gonna fund this first year. Um, I'm looking for grant opportunities. There's always a chance we might go out to businesses and say, you know, I'm a real big believer that we need uniforms. I think these kids need to be wearing a polo and looking nice and there. But as of now, I think we don't need anything from you, I just wanted everybody to be aware of this program. Bearcast TV, I mean, if anybody's watching, wanna ask me questions, go ahead, um, you know?
You're, you're just spot on there with, with the recruitment side of it. Get them in some cool t-shirt or polo, whatever it is, that's advertising what you're trying to do, and it works with the younger generation.
I really do agree.
I think one of the things we should do is, I mean, I've heard you talk about how, you know, for example, the folks, they just think it's no big deal. You bet, you gotta be there on a Saturday to get this testing done, correct? And they don't see any reason why you missed it. Well, the kids that are gonna be doing a lot of your EMS are what I call your hard chargers, your kids that are wanting to excel, they're wanting to push the boundary. Well, those are probably your kids that are also playing sports in small towns. I do think that as a school district, it'd be nice, Dr. Block, if we could have him, Gavin, get you the name of the person that is down there and tell them, look, nice that it works in maybe a Sioux Falls or a Rapid City where not every kid is involved in something on a Saturday. But in a small town like us, everybody is involved on something on a Saturday. They, they've gotta figure out a way to help us in the smaller communities, and I think that's one way our district could try to help you out. Is to try to put some pressure on the powers that be at the state to make it an easier path towards EMT. I think the other thing that we should look at is that, what's the next, so you're twenty, what's the next youngest person? I mean, I know it's not Dave Dulitz, I know it's not Paul Peterson, I know it's not Jason Coaster, Rob Rui. What's the next youngest person on the current Day County staff?
Lily LaFever worked here, I'm not sure if she still lives, I'm not sure.
But if she wasn't, who else would be? Jason Coaster, Rob Rui?
There's Lane Stern does a good job, um, I'd hope there's another one throughout there, and there might be others, but there's not. It's not who runs it, I mean, people that run it, Rita Sattler, Ryan Kozowski, I mean, just these guys.
Ryan Kozowski graduated with me. We've got a period of time that's missing from our EMS services for about twenty years. And I think maybe as a school district, we need to encourage people to, to sign up. I mean, maybe you could be that driver on the Wednesday night that they're looking for, you know? Carly graduates, I'm sure, Angie would be more than happy if I had some other type of job, you know, from ten till eight or something like that. But we do need to step up as a community, because when you call nine one one, the expectation is somebody's gonna show up.
All volunteers, you know, the fire department, everything, oh.
Yeah.
Sometimes they say, how many, if they go one Saturday, how many Saturdays they have to go?
Yeah, it's once a month. So it's like four Saturdays, and there's a makeup date there at the end, and I said, well, can you miss one and go to the makeup date? Well, he didn't wanna commit to that, so.
So it's four times?
It's four times, you have to be there for eight hours a day during Saturdays. That's tough. You know, and you miss one, you're out. Maybe you need to see what we do. I mean, everything's done through Zoom. My physics class is through Zoom. I don't know why we can't sit there and do an EMT class through Zoom. We have paramedics here, my camp's paramedic strength. It's ideas that we just need to explore.
Jim, thanks for bringing this up too, because I think, um, young people don't always know what opportunities are available or where the need is in the community. And this, I think, provides a really great connecting point, and I think you're a big link in the recruitment process too. And I can speak, my kids are on swim team because of you coming into the classroom to talk about it. And I think seeing somebody like you show what the pathway can be really helps, instead of coming from us.
Boy, you hit the nail on the head there, heck, you know? So you're gonna age out here eventually too, so you gotta get going first.
Exactly right. I think you should says, I'm excited to see what happens. I give the example, I haven't told many kids about this, because I didn't wanna, you know, get going ahead of myself. I told Connor Bower, I'm pretty good friends with Connor Bower, and I'm like, you know, Connor, I'm gonna do this program. Oh, Gavin, that's cool, I would've done that in high school. I'm like, that's exactly what kinda talks too, and, um, that's the person I'm looking for. I'm looking for the blue collar guy that's gonna stick around Webster, and he's gonna work on that service, day in, day night, day out, and I think he's gonna, I think we're gonna hit the next target out. That's the goal.
How much time have you invested into this program?
I've been working since June on this, um, meetings with Lemon, um, lots of like rural EMS meetings. Went to county commissioners, went to staff meetings coming up here, so I don't got time. To me, it's not that much work, it's kinda, so sure, it's all right.
I think it's bigger than you think, and I'm just gonna speak of where I come from, forty-two miles from Lemon. Lemon was the closest hospital to my hometown. And I can tell you, my mom's station wagon, which used as our ambulance when I was a student. They have an ambulance now, but this isn't, I mean, yes, it is about Webster, but other communities our size are gonna see this, they're gonna hear it. And we have a lot of folks that moved from larger towns to Webster. Who knows how many people we might see on our EMT, or new people in county town through the program like this. So this, this is more than just we, uh, we, um, staffing our employees. Hopefully we get some votes from this program, and so, and may grow off that, I think. We're all about, hey, road business, why can't we leave? Clear lights, no, I can't leave. So this would be a really good staff for this area.
And even if they don't stay here, it's a skill that they're gonna take with them elsewhere, you know, so if they come upon an accident somewhere, or, I mean, anybody that has these skills.
And they may not become doctors and, and nurses, they might be volunteer EMT in other communities, that's for the girl.
So Gavin, I tell you that from our perspective, I mean, you're good to go with us and get into, with Dr. Block as soon as possible to get into the classroom and start promoting this. And I think it's been pretty clear, if there's things that we can do to help, you know, to encourage and grow this, I mean, come back, you know? You may not have to drive from Brookings, that was only me and your mom that required you to drive up here. We could've had you appear via Zoom or something, but, uh, you know, come back and tell us what you need, because our community does need this, and it would be good to respect.
Yeah, for sure.
Gavin should briefly touch on the timeframe as to when we're gonna start this.
Yeah, so start working out June, so August was too soon. So we're hopefully gonna start in December with an interview process. We're gonna make the kids apply, go through an interview process, Lemon's seen great success in that, the parents love it, they get interview processes before scholarship season, before all this other stuff. You, uh, then we'll accept the kids, put them through HIPAA training, and then hopefully at the beginning of the semester, we'll start taking call shifts. That makes sense.
Do you know the Saturdays that are scheduled to be in the spring already? Just because I'd like to, that's the first start, is to find out, do we have conflicts?
Uh, I'm not sure if it's imposed yet, I'd find out. Not a rush right now, I'm ready to.
So the cost is three fifty, that's after some grants, is there any other grants that will affect the cost of the funding or?
So the first grant is eight fifty, takes out of three fifty, as long as you're not from Sioux Falls or Rapid City. So that's an automatic grant that anybody from Webster will get. After that, I'm working with the county commissioners to see if they will pay for it, if the kid passes the exam and commits a certain amount of time towards the ambulance. That's all a work in progress, but I'd also like to, you know, I'm looking for grants for the program in general, and I'm not exactly sure what other opportunities there are for kids, but, I mean, there's a dual credit scholarship here that I got from Ossie, I'm sure it's still here. That still exists. Still exists. That's a good scholarship, if you're discounted, it's a dual credit.
Is that, I mean, could the school and the county work together to?
That's a great idea, I mean, we match it, you know, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, county does a hundred and seventy-five, we do a hundred and seventy-five. For somebody that was doing the EMT certification, I think that's a good idea here. Then they finish it, and like Mark said, if you have ten kids do it, it's one thousand seven hundred and fifty bucks, that's, first of all, we'd be, we'd own cartwheels if we had ten kids do this, you know? But we get just one to do it, that's a good, good answer. I think that's a good idea, Aaron. I think Joel's right, you have to make it, you have to brand it, you have to have swag that people think is.
Yeah, well, it's a big deal, it works. It really does. This is a home run, good job.
Just for the record, I'd much rather listen to you than to that.
I will suck at that.
Pretty universal. The whole family agrees with that one, Aaron, the whole family.
You did really good.
Good job, Gavin.
All right, let us know what else you need, buddy.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gavin.
Mike, he's running?
No, don't say anything.
All right, discussion items, Superintendent reporting, Dr. Block.
First thing I'm gonna do is, uh, if you haven't seen it, we're gonna show a video. So Thursday, Thursday evening, I live in here, as will Jenna Sinner. She's one of five teachers in South Dakota.
Hi, my name is Jenna Sinner, and I teach high school science to grade sign through twelve at Webster Area High School, and I have been teaching for fifteen years. I love teaching because of the relationships that you get to build with students and being able to motivate them to become lifelong learners. I love being able to teach the students how to learn and being able to apply their knowledge outside of the textbooks. I think with projects, the students definitely get more involved. There's always a time for lecture, but I think the projects are where students are truly engaged and motivated the most to want to learn. Science is something that always interested me. Growing up in high school, I had a chemistry teacher that really inspired me to become a teacher, because his interactions with his students were always positive. They were real and genuine, and he made a point to make those relationships with his students, which I think is extremely important if you want to engage your students in learning. I would say what excites me the most about teaching is being able to see kids or students understand a concept that maybe they have been struggling with, and all of a sudden they understand it. When I'm excited about the content, then they are more apt to buy in to what I'm teaching them, which I think helps to motivate them to wanna learn more and wanna be engaged in what we're doing in class. One student's success story that I will always remember from my teaching career is I had just finished a discussion slash lecture about DNA, and the student looked at me and said, you must really love your job. And I had to kinda think about it for a second, but after I reflect on that moment, I think every teacher should exhibit that. If you don't love what you are teaching, then it's going to be very hard for those students to buy in to what you are teaching them. Sometimes I tend to get really animated or talk really fast, and they know that that's something I think is important and that I enjoy, which hopefully helps them understand it's okay to get excited about those things. The other thing that excites me the most about teaching, really has nothing to do with teaching, but it's not just seeing them be successful in the classroom, but outside of the classroom also, whether it's in an athletic or an extracurricular. I think it's important for teachers to be seen in the community at their basketball games and at their concerts and those extra things, because then they know that you care. Webster is a one building school, so we have students all the way from preschool to seniors. We get to see the students from when they're four years old until they're eighteen, which is pretty unique in that aspect. As far as our community, Webster is a town that is always willing to back a good cause, rally behind a good cause, and our school has tremendous community support. Webster has got this small town feel where everybody is always looking out for each other, and I think getting to know your students does come a little easier in a small town, because you get to know them and their siblings and their families, and you can build that relationship. Looking back on my teaching career, I would say the most rewarding thing is when former students will come back and just say hi, or let you know that you helped play a part in what they're doing now as adults. I look forward to continue teaching and motivate all of the students to become lifelong learners.
I put this in.
Anyway, Thursday evening is the Teacher of the Year award ceremony, and it's actually held the fourth here. And so Jenna and her family's going to be going down, I myself am going to be there. So whether she wins it or not, she's one of the top five in our state. This isn't about me, but I'm really proud that I was the one to hire her back in two thousand and ten, when David Trells retired. Huge shoes to fill at that point, um, and she's been here fifteen years now, does a great job. I remember when we were doing, um, the tours, it was mostly for people that were coming here for CTE tours. But one thing that most people don't realize is that our project, Lead Way, is actually a certified CTE program, you know, it's science. And the reason that program exists and is as successful as it is today, Jen, she was motivated as a teacher to take on the challenges of becoming certified and the challenges of learning the curriculum for those two specific classes, and they're very popular classes, not because they're easy, it's because they're challenging and worth having to teach in. So I look forward to, to the evening on Thursday, I wish it was for that sort of.
Congratulations, I mean, that is phenomenal and we're very lucky to have you, Jenna. I mean, that's, I hear from students, parents all the time that you're doing great things within the program and within our school. And I do know that you do motivate a lot of students to go out there and try different things and we are very lucky that we have you. So thank you, good luck, you should win it, no question. I, my vote's, it's easy. If you need me to call somebody tomorrow, just give me the list, Dr. Block, and I'll start making phone calls. But she's done a phenomenal job and we should make sure that that video is out on our district's webpage and get it out as much as possible to let people see it.
The next item that I have is a thank you from Dave Vetch, who is the director at the abbey that goes, not sure if you're familiar with that, but it's a former abbey over between Summit and Millbank. And we, we actually had a donation that we gave to them. We had risers in our music room that were purchased in 2005 when this particular building was built. And they were, they were risers that were large enough for you to have seated band members on each level, there's three tiers of them. Those were in place until 2020, for the fall of 2019, was right, no, it was 20, spring 20 is when COVID hit. And so we took them out at that time due to the COVID situation. And since then, we've had multiple music teachers who really like the feel of the classroom without the risers and they felt that they, they really didn't want the risers. And so we've had them in stores for five years. And I made an effort to see the area schools in the northeast area as well as reached out to other schools across the state, hoping to hope, you know, possibly get some money for them. Well, it turns out there was really not anybody interested in. Part of the issue is the size of the risers. Many of the schools were probably looking for risers for a good price, probably don't have as large a rooms as we have. Nonetheless, we had some district patrons who reached out to the abbey and said, you know, these might be interested in this because they have a lot of performances that they host in the abbey. I guess the acoustics are really great there, I've never been there myself, but I hope to go there eventually. And so when Dave Vetch, I was just about to say Shane Vetch, I was just kidding, this is for other colors, when Dave reached out to me, I said, sure, come over and look at it, take a look at it. And he sent a thank you saying that they really appreciate it. I don't know if they use them yet, but they look forward to that, that opportunity. So anyway, he sent a thank you. And he did say in here, he says, please, no, the abbey hosts a number of concerts annually and we'd love to see you do a question, a little pressure for us to go on. The next thing that I have is the 2025 enrollment, we discussed that already. One thing that I wanted to mention is I did a little bit of research in our Infinite Campus and while we're not the largest enrollment right now as we have been in the last 21 years, or excuse me, 24 years, I've started my 25th year here in Webster as the secondary high school principal. We are the second highest enrollment in our high school in those 25 years. The other, the other high one was in 2011, 12, and that was shortly, you know, one year after Ross had closed. I believe that was partly why that was as large as it was. So we're not busting into the seams, but we are seeing a little bit of, of stress in class sizes. When you get a class that's 50 kids, you have two sections of 2020, 25 and 25, and our largest class right now is 47, so we're close. And they don't always get balanced. And so when I say they're stressed, sometimes that does lock in some things and it doesn't provide some of the opportunities that we want for electives. And so good problem to have. But it's the second largest in my career here, and this is my 25th year, for the high school alone. We're sitting at 167 right now and we generally are in the 150, 155 range. So we're, we're doing pretty good. The school report card, I don't have a lot to share about that, I did look at it last week. The preliminary report card is available to folks like Mr. Case and myself and the school counselors to review the data. I can tell you initially, we are above the state average in all subject areas, which is English, language arts, math, and science, we're above the state average in all of those. We will do a little bit more in-depth review of the data when we do a school-wide comprehensive
CTE.
Yeah, comprehensive needs assessment for our school-wide title in the elementary, as well as we, we generally look at the data on a three-year, compared to three-year system every year anyway. So initially, it's looking good. Obviously, there's always going to be areas where we, we need to improve and that's, that's the areas that we're going to solve. But more to come on that when we look at the data a little bit more than we're kind of asking. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Block. Any other questions for Dr. Block? All right, principal report, Mr. Case.
Right now, we currently have a Starbase program going on with the fifth graders. That's been happening last week and this week. So it'll end this Friday by the fifth graders heading down to the airbase in Sioux Falls. So the last three years, I think we've done this, the last two years, it's a great learning experience for them to go down there and hopefully they'll see some jets flying over. I took them down one year with, on the bus and they had a great time, so it's a good, good experience for those kids. Preschool screening is October 9th, so we usually have that in the fall. So we will get an ad in the RNF and then we will send out information to, letters out to most of the parents. So if not all the parents get that letter, just make sure they contact the office and go from there. Just those two things. Well, I also should bring up special education. We're going through a transition with different forms that our teachers are using. So it's a transition year this year, we used to use Infinite Campus for our, the teachers used to use that for their IEPs. So we are using a form called SPED forms. So that'll be a transition with that, so we have a lot of learning to do with the specialized teachers. One key ingredient that we have on staff now are Amy Lindman, so she's a pathways teacher. She has experience with specialized forms, so she can be our resource and help us out. So just an FYI, if our specialized teachers are going through a transition with different documentation with their IEPs.
Okay, just hitting the numbers here quick, if I've got this right, Dr. Block, 167 in the high school building, divided by four grades, that's 41.75 kids per class.
We have a big freshman and a big senior class.
But then when I do the math, that leaves 368-ish in the rest of the building, that's 46 kids per class. That's pretty good, I think.
That's very good for us.
For our community to have in that elementary, 46 kids on average per.
Want me to graduate with your class, Aaron? With 50, and that was in 1991. Nick, how about your class?
51.
Yeah, so I mean, again, we're, we're doing pretty good.
Yeah, I just thought that was interesting.
Okay, NESC?
Yeah, a couple updates. We spent quite a bit of time, and you can read it there, but we did spend quite a bit of time with the gentleman from, editor from the water town current, just looking at maybe making a switch to that newspaper as the paper of record, since it's locally owned. But I think the other thing that is sort of coming down the tracks with them too is they're looking at establishing a building committee to figure out what to do with the property that they own. So I don't know what kind of impact that might have on member districts going forward, but discussions are starting. It's gonna be a slow process, but anyway, just something to keep on over there.
Just with what they're gonna do with, like, their current building and heat tight?
Yeah.
Like maybe?
Yeah, what's the future look like?
Right.
What are the needs? How do we make some little repairs?
Okay, any questions for NESC? Buildings and grounds?
Pump and pipe relocation, we're still working on a timeline with that. We are actually hosting a middle school music festival in October on the 14th. I haven't received information back, but my music teachers, it's a rotational thing and it's our turn to host as a school. I'm hoping that the pipe relocation in the high school gym will be done by then. If it's not, I'm hoping that they will give us the go-ahead where they can shut down whatever they're doing back particularly and safely utilize at least a portion of the high school gym because we do use the armory and the high school gym for that particular event. We have a Teams meet, meeting tomorrow. Basically, it's JDH and Architect Inc. that's kind of leading that. So we will have the subcontractors within that particular project as well as the contractors that we're working with, the, the timing materials, to just get a timeline. And so that's, that kind of leads into the demolition project. As a school district, what I believe we have left, and I could probably walk down there and find out some other things that we, oh, forgot about that. We need to get the, the scoreboard down from the wall in the old wrestling room. We need to move the wrestling mats. Right now, it is still protected that we would go to the baseball building. I don't know if that would change, I don't know. Nonetheless, we want to take the, the older mats, which are pretty heavy to move, and get those out there when we can. And we have storage shelves that are in the upper storage area that's above the building that will eventually be demolished. That's what I believe we have left to do, so there's not a tremendous amount for us as a district to be ready. It's just a matter of getting all of the, the other projects put in place so that we should start from there.
Good. Anything else for buildings and grounds? Sorry, enrollment, I think we kind of covered that already with everything else. All right, our next meeting, folks, is scheduled for Monday, October 13th. That is a holiday, we also have volleyball that night.
I have my calendar here.
Do we want to go to, we could do the 14th or the 15th, but I know that's difficult for you, Aaron, that week, those nights? Could you do the 14th maybe? 14th work for you, Mark?
Oh, I don't.
Joel?
Yep.
Nick? All right, let's do Tuesday, October 14th. Then in addition, Lori was kind enough, or Nick was kind enough to let us know that our December meeting is on the 8th, and I think we have an elementary school concert that night. So we won't make the, just give you guys a heads up, we'll have to probably change that, we will change that meeting date, we just need to figure out a different time. So that'll be coming up in the next couple of months. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Aaron, second.
Second.
Thank you, Joel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.